Ferguson and Maddie Shea from RCH Health. So this is a continuation of what you have turned talking about. The report, the environmental scan was in the packet. And I did just want to let you know that House of the Wall is not his wife. So he'll be here shortly. No, I don't know how shortly, but he's our area. But we do think he'll be here. So with that, I think I would turn it over to Ms. Maddie to kind of go through their process.
Well, good afternoon. As Allison said, my name is Michelle Ferguson and with me is my colleague Maddie Shea. And it's a pleasure to be with all of you this afternoon. I'm a little shorter than my colleague Julia, who was here back in January. And you all look a little different from when Maddie and I were up on that screen back in January. So we're excited to be with you as you continue the conversation about really establishing the strategic plan elements. And in particular, today's conversation is really about coming to consensus around what the strategic priorities are in your strategic plan. We're going to share a couple of pieces of information with you, but just as was the case back in January, a big portion of this conversation this afternoon is really going to be among all of you to really come to consensus around what you believe are the most important strategic priorities to advance as part of your strategic plan. So as we talk about this conversation today, I always like to share a couple of norms. These are probably ones that look familiar from January, but these are just some guiding principles as we go about this afternoon's conversation. As we engage in the conversation, we certainly encourage you all to continue to treat each other with respect, as I know that you will, one person speaking at a time, to listen to each other and really be attentive to the conversation at hand. You may hear things as part of this conversation that you may not necessarily agree with, and that's okay. Part of this is to have that conversation, to understand where those areas of consensus, where those areas of agreement are in your kind of big picture strategic priorities for the strategic plan. We're going to ask you to look for those opportunities for agreement. Even when you disagree, we ask that you do so agreeably. Again, that's part of just treating each other with respect. And certainly, we're going to encourage you, as you think about the future of this great community, to be bold. You know, what are those important things that this governing body really does want to prioritize as part of the strategic plan? And we're going to spend time today really defining what those priorities are. We've had an opportunity, my colleagues and I, in different forms, to speak with each of you, to hear your reflections on the existing strategic plan. And one of the things that we heard was some of the strategic priorities that you currently have aren't as well-defined as you would like them to be. Well, this is your opportunity to really engage in some conversation about what those collective definitions need to be to help provide guidance, not just for the organization, but also for the community. And I think that's going to be a really important part of also your conversation. And what we heard is how to involve the community's voice in the strategic plan as well, too. Ms. Maddie? So we're going to do quick introductions in just a moment, and then we're going to spend a little bit of time reviewing the environmental scan. Hopefully, you all had a chance to peruse that, at least briefly. We'll share with you some feedback that we received from the conversations that we had, as well as some of the research that we've done. And then, as I said, we'll spend a good portion of the time really engaging in conversation around the elements of the strategic plan. And then, I just want to remind you of the elements that you currently have within your strategic plan. We heard a lot from the conversations that we've had today about general agreement around the city's vision. That's still a very important touch point, really that North Star for this community. But we're going to spend our time today really looking at these strategic priorities. And I'll ask you probably more than once in our conversation, you have three strategic priorities right now in your strategic plan. After you hear some of the feedback that we heard in the environmental scan, I'll ask you, are those still the right strategic priorities? If not, which, what should they be? And once you come to agreement on what those strategic priorities are, then how do you define them? Let's be specific about what they mean, so that when you look at the strategic plan, you all have an understanding of what you mean by each of the terms that you put in for those strategic priorities. So that's really, again, this area right here, that's going to be the focus of our conversation this afternoon. So with that, I'm going to go around, I'll ask you just to do quick introductions. I know you all know each other and certainly have nameplates, but for the sake of the owl, as well as the microphones that are around, I'll ask you to introduce yourself and then just a thought that you have, an expectation that you may have for today's conversation. I'd like you to go first or last?
I'll go last.
Okay. Well, that means that he volunteered the person to his left to go second. So Andy, that means you're...
Wonderful. My name's Andy Fredericks. I represent Ward 4 here in Rochester, Minnesota. And my expectation for our conversation today, I don't have a lot of expectations. I'm going to have an open mind, give my feedback as concise as I can.
I'm Sean Palmer. I'm representing for the 5th Ward, and I'm here to listen.
My name's Dan Doring. I represent Ward 6, and I'm looking for clarity and collaboration in our conversation.
Allison, I'm here.
Allison's all city administrator and would agree that looking for clarity will be very helpful to staff and council.
Michael Spindler, Craig City Attorney with RCH, and keeping an eye out for clarity within legal progress.
Mayor. Hi. Kim Norton, Mayor, City of Rochester. And I think I'm interested in honing in on strategic goals as, because I think they're super important and the priority for budgeting, and we're starting our budget process. So I want to make sure our goals and our budgeting are aligned.
Good afternoon. Patrick Keen from 1st Ward of Rochester. Expectations for today. I've been looking at some of the scoping and the kind of the looking at it, and it does seem to be some things on the table to talk about what could change and which ones have been called out either by leadership or by others. And I sometimes struggle between these foundational principles and what are strategic priorities and then what become action plans, because I think more the action plan language. And I don't want to do that, because I don't think these are. I think of these as helping us set priorities for decisions that are going to be made over the next two-plus years. And so I want things that help us with that. If everything is a priority, nothing is a priority. But I also try to begin with the end in mind, like that idea of like, will these help us make decisions? And there's been a couple of things with our environmental stewardship. Is that a foundational principle or does that have to be a priority? And what's the difference? Were there action plans we've done? Are there things in there right now that I've heard questions about quality service? Should that be a given or is that like a strategic priority? The one thing I'll add as far as just more personal is that when I do my scan of 2025, 2026, and even a little bit further, is I want the city to be viewed as competent with all of the projects we've taken on over the last two years, with funding things and the amount of work we have in front of us. And I would love to find some way to reflect that in our strategic priorities.
Nick Miller, Ward 2. And I will echo what my colleagues have said. I look forward to getting to a clearer position of what we are ready to adopt in a future voting meeting, so that we have a clear set of budget priorities that guide those vouchers that come to us, that guide staff, and feel like we are at the right level of foundational principles, strategic priorities, that then inform an action plan, and that we have the right set guiding that action plan that's legible to staff and feels in line with these commitments that we're having today.
Randy Schubring, City Council President. And I'm also looking for clarity, like my colleague said. I'm also struggling with how do strategic priorities look for an elected body? I understand it for the Rochester, City of Rochester organization, for the folks that are sitting behind us. As elected officials, we're here to represent the voters. And sometimes, when I may have a different view of representing the voters than some of my colleagues, so I'm looking for kind of clarity on where does our decisions on specific projects, for example, affordable living? Now, that could be mean affordable housing. I may have a different view on affordable housing than some of my colleagues. So where does, where does that line go from representing the voters and making sure that their voice is in those foundational principles and strategic priorities, and then that flexibility that we need as representatives of the voters?
And I think you just gave a great definition of what consensus is, looking for those areas of agreement where you all have some commonality in terms of what you hear in the community and what are some of those items that are really important priorities to advance, not the specific project. Certainly, they're never going to have unanimity on all of the specific actions and projects that you have, but what are those guiding priorities that are important for this body, for this community that you all have agreement around? And that's really where the strategic plan becomes really important, for this governing body to set those priorities, so that you know, as some of you said, when you get into those budget decisions, you have some direction that you've given about what some of those high-level things are that need to come before you, that you are going to have to wrestle through and come through on the details of as you go through the process. So we'll talk a little bit about that as we go through the conversation. And I think you may remember from the conversation back in January, a strategic plan is really intended to answer three key questions. I know when we talk about strategic planning in communities across the country, and for those of you I know have had some strategic planning background from other parts of your life, there's often a lot of jargon associated in strategic planning. You hear all kinds of elements, all kinds of words, vision, mission, values, priorities, strategies, goals, actions, all those things. We really like to boil strategic planning down to three simple questions that really help guide this conversation around creating consensus for what are the most important things to move forward. You know, where are you today? What do you know to be true today? Where do you hope to be in the future? What do you hope will be true in the future? And then, how do you get there? And then, you're, the way that you have the strategic plan here in Rochester, you already have established that second question, that vision. That's really what you have currently, really identifying what must go well in order for that vision to be achieved. That's where those strategic priorities come in. And so we'll spend time today talking about that. That first question, what do you know to be true today? What's the current state of Rochester? That's what we spent some time helping to answer as part of the environmental scan that you all have a copy of. And what I like to do is just take a little bit of time, and we'll talk through some of the key elements of the strategic plan. In terms of the work that, excuse me, the environmental scan, in terms of the work that got us here today, just a really quick refresher, we had the initial work session with you back in January, it seems like just a moment ago, but it was actually several weeks ago back in January. We also had individual conversations with each of you soon after that January session. We also had a session with the city's leadership forum. So we were able to get feedback from key leaders within the organization. We asked them very similar questions to the questions that we asked you when we had our one-on-one conversations, those virtual conversations with each of you. We also had a listening session with representatives from the city's various boards and commissions. And all of that input is what helped us create the environmental scan that you have a copy of. And we are now at the right-hand side of your screen, having the conversation that we are today.
Can I ask a question about specifically the listening sessions with board and commission chairs? Can you give us a little bit more flavor as to how many were in attendance? And I know it was in the packet, but not a lot of detail.
Yeah, we're going to talk about the summary in just a second. Maddie, do you recall how many were, I want to say maybe 10? That number might not be... Yeah, about 10. We'll look it up, but I think it was about 10 people that participated in that boards and commission chairs focus group.
Okay. Then I have one more thing. We do have another council member here, and maybe he can introduce himself and share his expectations.
I deserve no time because of my tardy entrance into this meeting. My name is Norman Wall from Ward 3. My expectations are that I hopefully really move forward in making some great differences in our strategic planning, so that we meet the needs of Rochester.
Well, welcome. Thank you.
Just a quick question. Could you preview perhaps the future from this? So how far along are we? Are we one session away from having defined priorities? We're seeing how we got here today. How might we look forward?
Other feedback you want to provide there?
Well, I think it depends on how today goes, how much clarity and how much alignment you find, or how much difference you find with, I guess, I won't know until next week.
I'd wait till you're there.
So let's jump into talking about the kind of key themes that we heard through the environmental scan. As I mentioned, the environmental scan included a handful of different elements. We requested a bunch of data from the city. We also reviewed a number of existing data sources. So the environmental scan is really a mix of both qualitative as well as quantitative information to give you a sense of what kind of the state of Rochester today. I mentioned the study sessions, the conversations we had with each of you, as well as the leadership forum and that focus group with board and commission chairs. So you have a full copy of the scan, but I just wanted to spend a couple of moments kind of going over some of the high-level themes that we heard from those conversations and then get your feedback on them afterwards. So in terms of the quantitative data, what we know to be true from a variety of data sources, some of which were ones that the city provided, we know that Rochester, I know you all know this as well, too, that the city is growing, it's diversifying, and it's also aging. You know, I think some of the things that stood out to us as we look at, as outsiders, as we look at some of the data sources, obviously, growth within this community is significant. You're outpacing the national average, and that's significant. And we heard about some of those growth pressures when we had conversations in the, as part of the environmental scan, certainly becoming an even more diverse community. And you all know that to be true as well. And your aging population is growing at faster rates. One of the things that stood out, and I think it says on the screen, a 41% increase in the share of the population 60 and over by 2040. What also stood out to us, and we've seen this in some other aging communities as well, too, is that even the percentage of your population that's 80-plus by 2045 is going from about 4% now to 10%. That's a, that becomes a significant portion of your community, whereas those 18 and under, that percentage is staying about the same. So just interesting when you think about city services and demands on your services, how that changes as some of your demographic makeup changes as well, too. And what we also know to be true, and again, not something that you all don't know and haven't heard and experienced significantly, is that housing is becoming more expensive. The percentage of people that are defined as cost burden when it comes to housing is increasing. That's mirroring what we see nationally, but certainly that has an important impact today. Your median home values are also increasing much well above the state and the county averages as well, too. So it becomes even more expensive to live here, and that becomes a challenge as you look at the makeup and some of the housing issues that many of you raised in our conversations. So that's a little bit of what we know to be true from some of the data sources. And then, just a high-level summary of some of the key themes in the conversations that we had with all of you, as well as staff and other members of the community.
Councilmember Paul. And we have a couple of questions for you. I'm looking at your numbers, and you've got population down here, and I think you confused the Rochester numbers with the national numbers. You've got Hispanics at 18.5%, and it's really 6.4%. And you've got black people at 8.6% is what we have, and 13.7 is what you put down. I think that you took the numbers from our website and did it for the national numbers. The other thing that's kind of confusing to me is that you talked about the aging of the population, and our aging of our population is staying the same from 2010 to 2020 census. So how do you come up with the number that we're going to be 46% higher?
Let's see. I'm trying to follow. I'm looking first at, I believe you're on page 2, and you were referring to the racial and ethnic diversity. And we'll certainly take a look if there's an error that we made there. We'll make sure that we correct that one.
Well, but if you're at 58.4% of residents of white, that just doesn't make sense. And so that didn't ring true to me, so I went back and looked at the numbers. I looked at our website, and I go one line that says US, and then says another one for Rochester. And the Rochester ones are way different than what you're showing here.
We'll make sure that we cite the source, and if it's inaccurate, we'll make sure that we correct it.
Well, then that takes me down to the next one, is what else is wrong in the report?
We'd be happy to continue to review it. We will certainly make any updates we need to.
But go back to the senior part. If from 2010 to 2020, in the US census, that our senior population did not go up, what are you basing that's going to go up 43%?
That was based on data that was from the census and the Rochester COG information, the data that they have provided. We'll certainly go back and take a look at that to make sure it's accurate. But we cited that from the COG data.
COG being what?
The Rochester COG.
Yeah, the Rochester, also the council of government. It was from their, I think, their long-range transportation plan.
Yeah.
So in terms of the stakeholder input, so what we knew, what we heard from the conversations we had, some of the really important key strengths in this community, we heard a lot about the caring and compassionate community that you have here in Rochester. And we heard a strength in diversity as well, too, that that was something that many folks really cited as a key strength here. Excellent parks and trails and recreation amenities. People enjoy the outdoor spaces that you have here. High-quality education was something that was also cited. We also heard a lot about your economy and having a strong economy based on, or certainly bolstered by the investment by Mayo. Partly related to the compassionate community, we also heard a lot about partnerships and spirit of collaboration, having strong legislative connections to those. Again, some of the key themes that people shared as being strengths within this community that they, people wanted to highlight, having that strong financial position, and also being a city that is, has more amenities than some might expect for a city this size. We heard that a number of times in conversations that we had, being a city that really performs beyond its scale was something that a number of folks cited. We also asked people about some of the challenges that they see in the community and...
Councilmember Doring.
Yeah. I have a couple of questions about the previous slide. I understand who the stakeholders who were talked to to develop these community and organizational strengths. I'm kind of curious about the demographics of that, of those leaders that you talked to, right? So how many people fall into the diverse backgrounds that were quoted the slide before? How many people are of lower or mid-low economic bracket than what was spoken before? Because what about differently-abled people, right? So these strengths, I can buy into as a straight white male who's highly educated and is middle class. I don't know if the folks who voted to represent me, who find themselves in a different situation than I'm in, would identify the same strengths. So I'm just curious a little bit about who was talked to, like who those board and commission members were. Because I know that's also limited by folks who can have the ability to take off work, to attend meetings, and have someone who can take care of a child, so they can attend meetings and be a part of a board and commission. So just kind of curious about that. Can you tell me a little bit more about the makeup of the leadership that we talked to?
Sure. So the leadership from the city would have been the city directors.
Yep.
This, the focus group that we had with board and commission chairs, again, we did not, we didn't assess or ask them for any specific demographic data, so I couldn't tell you how they may fall within that demographic spectrum. Like I said, or Maddie mentioned, there were about 10 people who participated. We purposely keep that focus group anonymous, so we didn't quote people or name names. We didn't take attendance, per se. So it was intended to be open to any of the commission, board and commission chairs or representative that they chose, but we did not take attendance specifically.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a follow-up to Councilmember Doring's question. So will we see data on the, it sounds like we've had three groups. We have the council here, we have our staff leaders, and the boards and commissions. Will we see the themes and strengths for each of those groups, so we can kind of look at where we are, but then also what we're seeing, if there's differences?
Absolutely. And so in the environmental scan, we did break some of that out, so you could see all of the overall feedback from each of those groups separately. Again, we, as we shared with each of you, we viewed those conversations as anonymous, so we didn't quote people or name names. We categorized them and summarized based on those three different groups. So again, you can see that in the environmental scan. This is a summary of kind of the high-level commonalities that we heard across those three groups. Again, the environmental scan has some more detail that's broken down by each of those groups.
Thank you.
So then we asked, as I mentioned, we asked about some of the challenges or limitations that people experienced, again, based on those three groups. We certainly heard about growth and being able to manage expectations as it relates to growth in the community. We somewhat related to that is certainly housing and ensuring that there is housing access. I would also add to that internally looking at recruiting and retaining staff, ensuring that you have the capacity within the organization to deliver on those things that the community expects. Improving mobility and connectivity, certainly from a transportation perspective, was another challenge that we heard mentioned several times. We also know that navigating the federal landscape right now is certainly an area of uncertainty, not knowing what that might look like in the coming weeks and months, certainly a question on many people's minds. And then related to managing expectations around growth, we've certainly heard the term urban sprawl, and it mentioned a number of times in some of our conversations, and ensuring that that growth is managed appropriately for this, for this community. So those were some of the kind of overall themes of the challenges that we heard from the conversations that we had. And then lastly, we asked about opportunities. So what were some of the things that people thought were important? As you look to the future and you think about this strategic plan, what are some of those important opportunities that the community might want to leverage or seize in the future? So certainly harnessing transformation from DMC was top of mind for a number of the conversations that we had. Improving mobility and public transportation, sort of mitigating that challenge that people saw about being able to navigate the community effectively and ensuring you have a mobile community. Enhancing partnerships was certainly a strength that people mentioned, and also an opportunity to really leverage in the future, building on those collaborative partnerships that the city has an opportunity to participate in. Leveraging growth of the tax base as you grow, ensuring that... Leveraging growth of the tax base as you grow, ensuring that using those funds appropriately as, as the tax base shifts. Advancing equity was a theme that we heard quite a bit as it relates. And also we heard about environmental sustainability, ensuring environmental sustainability in the, in the growing community. Other kind of community issues that we heard about interest in enhancing opportunities for entertainment as well as not being forgetful of Rochester's history and ensuring that the legacy and the history of this community is included in, in what those future opportunities might look like. As the, as the world has become, begun to embrace AI, looking at new technology and innovation to help shape some of the work and the services that are provided. And then also the last two bullets I'll mention, and these were two that specifically came up in the conversation with the boards and commission chairs. They talked a bit about coordinating waste management services, not necessarily the city being involved in, in providing the service, but in coordinating waste management services. And as they were talking about entertainment and services, they also had some conversation around the library and ensuring or continuing services for a modernized library. So those were some of the key future opportunities that folks shared, shared with us. So that gives you just again, a high level overview of some of the feedback that we heard as part of, as part of the conversations we had. And so certainly I'll pause for a moment and see if there are questions that you all have about anything that was shared and then be interested in, in your reaction to some of this information. Are there things that surprised you or resonated with you or any concerns that you had?
Councilmember Wall.
From the last slide, how common would those items be for almost any city across America? How unique are they to Rochester?
I, I certainly think that there are many communities that have some similar opportunities when they think about issues like technology and innovation and dealing with in today's world, concern about financial sustainability. But obviously there's a lot on this list that I think is probably unique to Rochester. Obviously, DMC is unique to Rochester. Specific issues when it comes to your history are obviously going to be unique to this community and even some of the partnerships that you have, I think are very unique to, to Rochester.
So, yeah, just thinking about the discussion we went through and sort of like you say, like the debrief and I know councilmember Doring asked some questions which really kind of says like, is this really community based or is this, you know, I'll call it skewed by who we talk to, either staff or leadership things. And I, again, I take it as a good point that I didn't take this as, this is a deep dive into the community, the way as, you know, a poll, not a poll, but a real survey would be. And it wasn't like this outreach where we're pulling opinions through the whole thing. At the same time, I think it's a good like starting point. But I will say too, though, that just like, I mean, when I go through these, I don't look at them as like, okay, those four things, I have to reflect those in this. To me, I'm coming here with many years of experience working with the staff and with where we are, and that's affecting me a lot more than the debrief. And I guess I'll just say that out loud so that everyone understands that.
Yeah, certainly the city's had the advantage of going through, you mentioned Polco. You've had community surveys that have been statistic, I'm assuming those are statistically valid surveys that gave a sense of the, of the pulse of the community at that time.
We try.
Mayor?
Yeah, I'll just add, I think all those things, you know, everything I've seen here, all those things were important. I was a little surprised to see folks not reflecting on the, what happens moving forward. I saw some things that were there like transportation and library and some of those other things. But what I didn't see the housing issue, which is going to be a today and a tomorrow issue, not just a today issue. And that came out, education, housing on the community response that we took, which was to look out to 2050, housing was number one or education, yeah, housing was number one, education was number two. And so I was a little surprised to not see those in there. They're there earlier, but they're not there on future. And the other one is, the other thing that from the Rochester visioning exercise that I saw, a lot of talk about diversifying our economy moving ahead in the future, to not always just rely on Mayo, which is going to be, is strong and is going to continue to be strong, but diversifying our economy so that we're more than just Mayo. And I didn't see anything about that in there and that surprised me a little bit. Otherwise, nothing there was shocking, just it seemed like some things were missing.
I had a few that, and they may be more granular in there, but one of our current strategic priorities is quality services. And I didn't see anything in there about that or efficiencies of, and streamlining systems and that piece. So that, that surprised me. And then, and this may be to councilmember Keen's point of who we talk to. I didn't see anything that talked about connectivity and, and public engagement in that piece, that realm.
Councilmember Frabrik.
I'll speak for the community. Their, their number one concern would be having affordable options and stuff, obviously in town with housing and so on. But their number one concern is rising taxes. You know, staying on top of things, keeping our, our city top quality, but not at the expense of a continually rising budget and continually rising taxes. I didn't see any more taxes in there. And that's honestly the number one thing I hear.
Councilmember Miller.
I'll just say, my, my concern is, as we're having this conversation, I think all of this is subject to our own individual interpretation and I have a concern about how we're getting to a point of clarity because to the point about tax base, I mean, I see leveraging growth of tax base, affordable housing, managing sprawl as a focus on building out housing in our urban core, right? And that's a way to manage taxes. So I'm taking one lens to this as I'm hearing these conversations and my concern is how do we get to a point of clarity so we get to these strategic priorities that are clear to staff as we set a budget for the next several years?
Councilmember Palmer.
Well, I, I would say the number one issue would be safety and, and public safety is, is everybody's number one issue. I think definitions to me is important. I, I, I don't like the fact that we looked at the committees because the committees are going to say they're more as important as theirs. I mean, the library committee is going to say they want a new library. That makes sense. And the environmental commission is going to say they want more sustainability. That makes sense. I looked at coordinating waste management, which is a county item to do. And we also did a Polco survey on that five or six years ago, and it showed that ninety two percent of people were happy with their airbrush disposal. And so there are some people who want to have one poller and that, we've already looked at that. And so one committee might say that, that doesn't mean that it's, it's what this seven people in the city council think are important. And so I would like us to focus, kind of like what Mr. Miller's saying, focus on the seven, what, what we think should be our, our strategic plans in the next two years.
Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, again, just thinking about the debrief we just went through and like where it came from and that, I, I want to go back to what councilmember Wall said, that how much of this is normal U.S. 2025 sort of municipal problems? And there, and there are some of them, a lot of them, and some of them are unique to us when you talk about growth or, or these other sort of things. One of the things in my prep, trying to get ready for this meeting and these sort of discussions is like, how do I merge those or think about them? Is it that, that there are problems that are, you know, not just national, some are international and, you know, beyond that, but should we as a city take them on as our priorities? Or does our city have to focus on what's most important to the, you know, the hundred and twenty five thousand people living and working here right now? So that, that sort of like, how much of it is unique to us? But I don't mean to imply with that that our strategic priorities have to be unique to us, even though it's a national problem. What are we doing locally for it? But I, it is sort of like, I struggle with that, the difference between the two and where, how important, like we talked about the affordable housing. We have a problem here. It is not a local, just a local problem. But when you start, start talking about what the solutions are, then you get into things that councilmember Frabrik's talking about, like is that, is that a, is that a kind of a redistribution of wealth? If it is, we have to be careful how that works. So those are the kind of things that I think about when I think of the debrief.
Councilmember Palmer.
Well, I think you go back to real simple is, is our current budget numbers is, is public safety, public works and park and rep. Those are our top three items that we have as a budget items. And I think that's what's important. If we want to shift that, I think that's a decision the city council needs to look at and make.
So given that, now it's really your opportunity to, to have that conversation about what should your priorities be? What do you, what is this, what is the interest of, of this body? So again, you have three strategic priorities in your, in your current strategic plan. And here's your, here's your full plan of the exist, of the existing plan. We talked about the vision. Some of you mentioned the foundational principles, some of the elements in the foundational principles as well as the strategic priorities, perhaps needing some clarification, maybe needing some better definitions so that you all have agreement on what those items mean, which are the right items that you all want to advance in your strategic plan? And how do you, how do you define those so that there's, so that there's clarity? So at this point, you all have, as many of you mentioned, you have a variety of different pieces of information, data points, if you will. You have information from the feedback that we heard from the conversations that we had over the last six weeks or so. You've got data that you have from your past citizen, community surveys, the Polco survey that was mentioned, along with your own experiences out in the community. And so I'll ask you this question, as we look at those strategic priorities, the three that you see in the bullets there, do these reflect what must go well in this community in order for the vision that you have in your strategic plan today to be achieved? And if not, where's the, what's, where's the consensus? Are there areas that you see here? And I'm not sure what the, I always get asked the question, how many should we have? What's the right number? There is no magic number. It's really what this body believes is important to include in the strategic plan. So you happen to have three now. And so the question is, are these the right things that must go well in order for the vision to be achieved?
Councilmember Keen.
So I appreciate the way you're setting it up to look at this and what needs to change. But I, I kind of want to go back to the other question you had, the, the two or three, two or three sentences. Cause I was around when we came up with these and I've watched them being used to apply to our decision making as we go through. Is this, this is project, which, which the council action, which one does it address? And I, and I'm starting with that in mind, but I'm also looking forward and trying to say, you know, begin with the end in mind. I, I don't want to talk specifically to those bullet points, but I just want to, with my peers, ask some questions like, but these two or three sentences describes your, what you hope to be true? And one of them is, the city of Rochester executes a schedule and to budget on a long list of complicated projects over the next three years. That the city of Rochester is a respected partner on a record-setting private sector investments and that the city of Rochester operates within its means. Now, I'm not trying to change any words up here. I'm trying to say this idea of like, does that, is it, can we move towards that or is like, no, that, that can't be a priority? We have to move fast and break things, that kind of stuff. Cause one of the things I'm worried about is I watch all the commitments we made in 2023 and 2024 is they're starting to be projects now that have to execute. And if we as a, you know, policy body continue to say, and this, and this, or change this, I worry that we're disruptive and I want to use this discussion to see if that's, if that's a consensus or if that's a minority opinion.
Councilmember, could you state your three statements again?
Good. And I just did this off of their prompt, but it was like, what, two or three sentences describe what you hope to be true in the future? First one was, the city of Rochester executes to a schedule and to a budget on a long list of city municipal projects, that the city of Rochester is a respected partner on record-setting private sector investments and that the city of Rochester operates within its means.
Do you, yeah, are you looking for feedback on there?
I'm looking, I, I don't know. I, I don't, I didn't want to start.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I didn't want to, I mean, if we start, I, I think there's a better discussion to happen before we say, eh, maybe move that or not, move something else on. This idea of like, is there a consensus around this or is like, I'm talking about things that I could reflect affordable living in, we live within our means. I could affect quality services as that we execute. So those things might work, but do they, do they work generically or do we need to change them to be more specific to the world we're in in 2025, 2026 and 2027? And that's, I'm suggesting we need to do that, but I don't know. That's, I'm coming to the discussion.
And I think you're moving to the, the defining. So once you've, once you've identified the what, then you can start to put some definitions to it. And I think you looked at that, the next slide that we have, which was the instructions that once you've figured out what those key things are that are important, so be it, if it's affordable living or if it's quality services, then how do you all define that? What is that, what does quality services mean to this group? That's where the couple of sentences come in, that you begin to define it. So I think the question is, what are those big buckets, strategic priorities? What would you call it? I, I heard when you said kind of live within your means, I think about financial sustainability, perhaps, maybe that's a, that's what you're, what you're looking to define there. I don't want to put words in your mouth.
No, but, but you're on a good point. It's sort of like, you know, I can look at affordable living there and think of tax rates and like how much, how much we take on within our, our budgets. Somebody else on this group in 2023 looked at that and said, single family homes. So we, we, we know that we can read those things differently and that's okay. But I, before I get into the big buckets, I wanted to see if like this, I'm trying to say the domain right now is different than when we set these up in 2021 or 2022. We have a lot of work in front of us. And I, and again, from my reading, and this is community reading too, is that we, we have to make sure we're, municipal government is viewed as competent. So again, I'm, I'm speaking too much. I just, but I did want to get that out into the discussion.
Councilmember Palmer, do you have any of that?
No, but I've thought. No, I'm going. I, I, I think looking forward is what we need to do. And, and I'm not disagreeing with what Mr. Keen just said, but affordable living to me, when we, my understanding is, is that not just single family dwellings, but, but also transportation and what does it cost to live in Rochester? And it might be somebody who has rental and, and I have to rent a place, it's how do we make that affordable? If I can eliminate one car for a family, that's about nine thousand dollars a year in savings, so that, that helps out with affordability. And so that's, looks at, had a look at that. But if you're knocking on doors and talk to people, one of the hardest conversations you'll have, at least for me, is somebody who's retired, who says my house just went up, my taxes just went up, what, I can't afford to live here anymore. And that's a different perspective than somebody who's 20 years old or 25 years old trying to find an apartment that they can afford at starter wages. So that's affordable living to me is, is that bucket of, of how do we, how do we do that?
Mayor, you?
Yeah, well, I was, you know, trying to get at what he was asking there and it does sound like you've moved to that kind of that next step. And so maybe, you know, and I think it's a good discussion for us to have. I've always struggled with affordable living because we only have so much control over affordable living. The, the world and inflation and, you know, sets a lot of that. So that, I, I know why we did it because we were looking at, can we control housing? And we need affordable housing and then there's more than just housing. And so we kind of grow out. I'm not sure that always gets to it. But I do think to your point about, are we living within our means? As a city, we always have to live within our means. We set a budget, we stick to our budget and it's our job at the table to have these discussions about what, trying to hit the balance between what this community expects. And to your point, Andy, people want a lot from the city. They just don't want to pay for it. And, and it's our job to say, here's how far we can go to make sure they're happy and want to stay here without taxing them out of their home so that they feel hurt. And then there's no, I mean, putting something out there isn't going to solve that problem. That's something you're going to struggle with every time you set a budget and every time you have these discussions. I just wanted to add for me, and I said this earlier. I, I just wanted to add, for me, and I said this earlier, to me, quality services is something we expect our administrator to assure. That's her job and that's what we hold her to. I, I always kind of felt like that kind of wastes of space on there. We're only going to have three. If we can have four, you want to leave it up, fine. You know, but I, one of, one of the issues that I ran on, that I've talked about, that I know this community cares about, is sustainability and environmental stewardship. But having that as a foundation, when it comes to doing something about it, it's not one of our strategic goals. And I can't tell you how many times I've heard that. Saying it's a foundational principle never gets it to something that is raised up enough to spend money on or to focus on. And so that's where I'd maybe like to pull that down a little bit and have some discussion about how do we move ahead as a, as a community to make sure that we're being environmentally, you know, we're environmental stewards, but that we're also leaving the world in a better place and addressing all the issues that come with environmental issues. So I would love to see that called out a little bit more so that we actually, when we want to talk about something, it's there. And it's not like, that's not one of our strategic goals because we can't talk about it, which is kind of what I've been frustrated about.
So I was going to, well, I was going to start with what I thought might be the easiest one, which is quality services. And granted, I was not here when these were adopted two years ago. Four of us weren't, weren't here. So I look at quality services and I think quality and efficient and sustainable and value services, so that it connects with our residents. Okay, so we want them to be quality. We want our staff, Administrator Zounds and her staff, to ensure that when she brings us a budget, that there's efficiencies involved in, in that budget and that there is sustainability included and that the, the public values them. And that may mean values, we use some of our community engagement resources to ensure they know they're, they are getting value services. So, and then I'll go to affordable living, and I'm just responding to what's up here now. I tend to agree with Councilmember Palmer as far as what I thought it meant, not being on the council. I thought it really did speak to housing, transportation and, and employment and, and, you know, the cost, cost of living. Primarily housing is how I looked at it. And, and I, I have to commend the previous council on the work in, in the housing area and moving in that direction. I think I'd like to see that affordable housing to have even more of a focus on housing and homelessness. And then economic vibrancy and growth management, I kind of see that. And I, well, I guess I, I'll let someone else do.
So can I, may I ask, are you advocating that these three remain the priorities with first definition?
I think they need to be adopted and other, and the council needs to, needs to add additional ones, like the, the mayor suggested. I think, I think what I'm struggling with and I, what I sense that my colleagues are struggling with is the question I posed in the beginning, which is, it's really difficult as we have different views of what our voters want. And so finding that overall bucket so that it isn't so generic that it's meaningless to us is kind of the sweet spot that I think we're looking to.
Councilmember Miller.
And I would just add, I, I come to this question, it came up during the demographics part. Affordable living for, across different demographics in our community or affordable living for the median member of our community? Because if we talk about accessible housing, I mean, there are much fewer options and accessible housing units. And so we could say, we're meeting, we're focusing on affordable living and constructing houses, but we're missing affordability and housing access for a part of our community. I also think about the time horizon. You know, economic vibrancy and growth management, across what time horizon, affordable housing, affordable living, across like, we set a long-term goal of 10 years, is that affordable today? How are we planning for this longer-term, right, goal? Because we, we talked about this 10-year horizon in the initial, what do we want to be true 10 years in the future? And we could get to live within our means today, next year, but set ourselves up for an unsustainable situation 10 years in the future to a different council and a different version of this community. And so those are some of the pieces that aren't clear enough yet in, in this for me, to make sure that people have options, right? Depending on who they are in our community, whether that's somebody who's starting their career or somebody who is looking to stay in their home later in life. Because that's going to be a different part. And I don't feel like we're, we're talking about equity, which to the mayor's point, I agree, the sustainability is confusing to me in foundational principles because I've heard also that it's not a strategic priority. But then I look at social equity and I, I see that too as, oh, it's a foundational principle, but sometimes it doesn't seem to interact with the strategic priorities when I think about, again, accessibility and our transportation system and our housing. That's just a confusion for me in this process and in this pyramid.
Councilmember Palmer.
I'll go back to what we budget for, and quality services is in the budget. And the reason that it reflects that is like public works, you know, we plow a certain period of time because that's what our public expects. Our public parks and trails are, are set up and, and that takes money. And, and that's where that quality service comes in. Responses is timely question, questions and responses. We did the 311 service, which costs money, which is in the budget. And, and so, I mean, if somebody calls us and we say, we'll get back to you in a month, is that, is that what we think is the quality service? Do we plow a road? Do we wait two weeks to plow the road? Is that a quality response? Because quite frankly, we could do that and we say have a lot of money, but, but I don't think our public wants that. You know, do we have enough fire personnel to show up to a fire? Or do we say, eh, it's close enough? Those are all things for me for quality services that has to be in the budget. And if you don't have that and have a set standard, what you think is important, I don't think that, that you should be able to expect every route, road to be plowed in an hour. It could be done, but it would cost us a lot of money. I go back to the single-family dwellings and I go back to affordable living. You know, we did the Maxwell study, there are now a third one of those. If, if you do a study and the study says that you're short on single-family homes by a lot, then that should be your focus. If it's not going to be your focus, then don't do the study. And, and, you know, when you look at, at the growth management, what does that mean? And, and to me, that means that we manage the growth, we don't let other people manage our growth. And so we don't go willy-nilly where we're going to put sewer, where we're going to put new roads. We do it on a, on a plan that works for the city of Rochester to help out with that. So those are my ideas on, on those two right now.
Councilmember Fredericks.
If this, not to oversimplify, but if this is just going to be the basis upon which we make our decisions, you know, public safety, community safety, same difference to me. Fiscal responsibility based upon facts. And hearing including all of our community members' inputs, just like Councilmember Palmer just said, certain things are going to come up where, you know, something's going to be a front runner in that particular deal, you know? There's a lot of examples, like Dover must recently, it was the Peace Plaza. And there's a lot of different views on how that was seen. What was the overriding concern on that one? What would it boil down to in that one was safety? Okay? The next thing it might be, something's really bland and not looking nice. It might be from an art lens. We have to look at it, make this thing appear nicer, more appealing to the general community, so on and so forth. Each thing has to be kind of weighed out and you have to lead with what particular thing is the front runner on that issue. So it's hard to just throw a blanket or, oh, these are our three, three things we're going to do on all things. It's almost impossible. The next thing might be, you know, Councilmember Doring's going to have a lot of things, he's going to come at things, just like Councilmember Miller said, it depends on the circles you are in and you're hearing from. You know, who you surround yourself with is what you're going to hear the most of. I couldn't agree with that more. You know? Councilmember Doring brought up a lot of things that personally I wouldn't think of right away, but as he brings them up, I'm like, of course, that's important. So, you know, that's how, you got to come at each thing from a different angle almost, depending upon what the situation is. So it's hard, I mean, we could debate this all day long and next week and the week after. So, you know, that's, that's just what I look at it. Safety first. Fiscal responsibility is huge without sacrificing quality of services. And hearing our, hearing our community members, you know, and, and making decisions based upon, you know, not who has the loudest voice, what is the largest consensus? Because the people, there's certain people, I've seen them a lot already in my short time on this council. It's like the loudest voices get the attention. Okay, great. But it doesn't necessarily mean that's the largest consensus. All right? That's all I got.
Go back to the, the prior slide. So I do have a question.
Oh, I was just going to recognize the mayor.
Yeah, I was just going to add, I, I think what I'm hearing from everybody and, and some of the same frustration is, you can put quality services down, but what, to what level are you holding that quality? That's, you know, you could, so that's the frustration, I think, for all of us, interpret all these things differently. We all may have different ideas about what quality is or what affordable living is. And that, you know, that's the frustration with this. And, and I'm just going to follow up with, with Andy's comment. What you have said is why we did the Rochester visioning exercise. That's why we did it, because we hear from the same 10 people all the time. And they're loud and they get in front of us, but they're not the whole community. And so my goal, the reason I did that was so that everybody had a chance to say what they wanted for their community. And so I literally am going to bring something from that survey to you at every meeting for the rest of the year. Sorry. But that's what it's there for. They've told us what they want. They've told us what their concerns are. And it's not the STPs, it's not the same 10 people. It's everybody, and it's statistically significant. I've gone back to them, we've gone through it. And it wasn't a survey where people had to choose things they wanted. It was open-ended, so they told us what they wanted. And that is different from a survey. It is like a large focus group, in fact. So I will continue to bring that forward, hopefully to help us remember what the community at large said as opposed to the same 10 people.
I'm going to connect what the mayor said and what Councilmember Fredericks said, which was, Councilmember Fredericks pointed out, listening to the public. And one of the, the items on the Polco survey that stood out to me when it was presented to us, and I looked at it again last night in preparation for today, and the biggest gap was in public engagement. I think the, the, the number was 43, 44 felt engaged and the expectation was 60 or something like that. And so I think there's something there when it comes to us being able to really know what our citizens want. And, you know, I, you know, I had a master class last year and many, five of us here did the same thing. And so we have a sense of our public, but we really want to stay, have, have a finger on that pulse going forward as we make our decisions.
Councilmember Keen.
One thing I wanted to add to the discussion, just on the quality services thing, and this is a little bit of history, or as I approached this when we were doing these four years ago, there's, most of the initiatives that come in front of the council are project-oriented, they're new things, they're not operational, they're not the things that go on in public works on a regular basis, or police or fire, or, you know, basically the clerk's office things. And that was the reason we had quality services. That was that idea of like, looking at the operation of the city, not just the operation of the city council, to say, do our strategic priorities really address the way most citizens touch the city of Rochester? And most of it is through the operation stuff that frankly, we as a council don't deal with on a regular basis. So that was one of the reasons on there. And if you look the way it goes down into action plans, and I don't want to get into this, but that's where we were trying, then, then those things we're dealing with, the operations and trying to say, you know, what are our key indicators of the clerk's office operating efficiently or the key indicators? And, and that was more, that was focused on that idea of like, when Councilmember Palmer says, what are the main things we do? Public safety, public works, and then, you know, parks and library, that idea of like the amenities and these other things, that they're not the, the things that come in front of us all the time with annexation and development and things like that. So a little bit of history with it, but also that point that if you want to know more about what the individual words say, you've got to look sometimes into the actions that follow some of them.
Can I talk, can I go on that?
Administrator Zounds.
I was. She's the facilitator. But when you look at just the, this visual here, when you get your council packet, you get the three areas that have some of the definition, that is probably informing some of how people knew these things, but just going to affordable living, the areas of focus, at least when this was originally adopted, was housing variety and affordability, transportation options and access, equitable regulatory landscape and creative incentives, access to opportunities and amenities, owner occupied, affordable housing, increasing ownership opportunities for Black, Indigenous, people of color and seniors. So you might add individuals, but there is. I just think it might be helpful to this discussion to, because I feel like that's maybe what we're wrestling with, is what does a short priority title mean? And is it still appropriate? And maybe it's, not to take you to the next slide of your work, but I feel like we're getting stuck in there. And so quality services does talk about some of the things that Council President Shubert mentioned in different words, but in some of the things that Councilmember Fredericks and Palmer were talking about. And it, I think tries to integrate some of the foundational principles to the priorities. And so if you were going to change the words of a priority or add a priority or switch a priority, you would still need to be defining what does that mean? And where, how are you going to enforce that? How do you expect staff to enforce that? If regulatory framework's off the table, it probably shouldn't be as simple as that.
The question that I was going to ask, that, that I hear in this conversation a little bit is, there seems to be some overlap or perhaps fuzziness between the foundational principles and the strategic priorities. Because I heard in the foundational principles, you've got environmental stewardship, fiscal responsibility and sustainability, public safety has been three things that some of you have mentioned that are critical issues that you all believe are part of, that, that perhaps, again, not to put words in anyone's mouth, may bleed over into some of those strategic priority territories. And so curious about that question.
Councilmember Fredericks and then the mayor.
You told us to focus on strategic priorities, so I was doing such a good job and I didn't even see it was above it. I'm serious, I've been looking at yellow. So yeah, I do see that. So now I look real bright, thanks.
Yeah, and I would say, and that's a constant frustration for me because they're there, but they're not always down here. And when you want to pull them down, even when you put something on the RCA, it says, well, which of the strategic priorities is it? Well, no, I'm talking about a foundational principle. And, and so I don't want to be made to feel like those foundational principles don't have a place because it wasn't one of the three things we chose. And that's been a frustration for the last several years, particularly with environmental stewardship, which has been, you know, that was my key point of running. It's something I wanted to focus on, it's what the community expects, and yet I always feel like it's not there. And it is.
It's, it's in the bigger version. And the question is, it's still maybe there's, you know, it's placed there.
May I ask, is, particularly for those of you who maybe have more history with this strategic plan, how, how do you envision or how, how was it envisioned that the foundational principles and the strategic priorities would be utilized? Do you, do you have a sense of, of how they're different? And is that a clarification that this body wants to make?
Councilmember Keen, go ahead.
So I, I can only respond to how I viewed it at the time. And that part of it is, I, I think the strategic priorities have more of a point in time feel to them, where the foundational principles do not. They, they persist.
I have a question for Administrator Zounds. Can you talk a little bit about how you use, you and your staff use these for preparing for budgeting going forward? How does, how does the staff do these?
Well, I can speak for how I want them to do it. I think it's similar to what Councilmember Keen said, in the, just interplay of the foundational principles and the strategic priorities. And I see in how they show up in the areas of focus is that's how they sort of intertwined, is you deliver affordable sort of intertwined, is you deliver affordable living based on making sure people, that the way we look at programs and services is that we have, there's access to opportunities and amenities. That might be programs, that might be services, that might be employment, that might be, we've talked about childcare before. So it could be more specific. Be helpful. And I would appreciate. But I look at them as, these are the things that if we're talking about investment, investing in resources, that that is where we should look first. And if something doesn't seem, you know, these are pretty run. If it doesn't seem like it falls within that, or if it falls within, say, economic vibrancy, but it doesn't meet the, some of the foundational principles of equity, social equity, or financial sustainability, like, good idea, let's think about how we might do this idea differently. Because I can't spend $4 million on that, you know, here. It's not fair, in my view, it's not fair to bring something like that to the city council, and now you're wrestling with this huge number publicly, unless it's super clear that in your strategic priorities, you're okay spending a lot of money on certain parts of the priorities, right? And in what sources of money are you okay with that being? So it's, I would say it's sort of the guard, it's not the legal guardrails, but it's sort of the, in the spirit of guardrails, of what is something reasonable to bring forward because it requires a lot of political trips when you vote on increases to the budget, some of which are part of being a city, because we have a lot of, our service organization, a lot of what we do is either service contracts or human agents that are employed by the city. And those other investments, if they're not one time and they're ongoing, as council member Miller pointed out, it could set up a future council for hard consequences of something seeming sustainable in the moment, but we didn't think about the long term. That once you start something, one of the hardest things to do with government is stop doing it. There's a constituency for everything. We usually use horseshoes as the example in leadership forum. Like, even if we change a part to be a more current use, there will be someone who plays horseshoes that will miss the worship. And that's challenging.
And the other side of that is that sometimes you have to spend more money in the current time in order to get the savings down the line. And that's the other piece that we always struggle with, because it's, you know, the upfront cost for X, Y, or Z are really high. But if you look 10 years down the line, and I think, I go back to the RPU when they did all the streetlights, you know, they changed them all into LEDs. But they had to make that initial investment in order to see the savings that was gonna play out for the rest of forever, that was before we was here, so.
But there was actually a public works investment, paying RPU to do it, to get the city the savings.
Right. So both can be true. I mean, different sides of the same thing.
I guess that's why, why I think that both the foundational principles and the strategic priorities are important. And I view, at least I view the foundational principles as not changing much. Like, that would be a much bigger change than strategic priorities, even though those might not change in the, like, the way you use, the description of where you're at and how you're gonna continue to move on them is important, because we may have accomplished some of those things, or it's underway, and now it's about sustaining a program that was built out to do its good work.
That helps. Thank you.
So given that, now focus on the, the light blue and the yellow. If, if that is how the staff is utilizing the foundational principles and the strategic priorities, are there adjustments that this body wants to make to any of those? We have to define them, absolutely. But given what you know to be true today, are those the right foundational principles, guiding principles to use? It's, I, as I heard the administrator talk, it's almost the lens with which they, they view things that come before you, and then the strategic priorities.
Council member Miller. So just curious, we, we also looked at the strategic priorities and areas of focus. I feel like that's a more tangible area as we look at limitations looking forward. I start to wonder if we should maybe adjust those and then summarize them with a theme? I feel like we're working in this vague space between how these are defined, where really, really the definitions of these three areas today are the areas of focus. And it feels a little more anchored in something that we can tweak.
So we're gonna pull that next one up.
Are you continuing, council member Miller?
Well, and I only look back to these, the future opportunities, the limitations, challenges, and community organizational strengths, and, and just wonder if those are well represented in those areas of focus, if there are key ones that are missing, and if that feels like a tangible place to come to the consensus of, should that be reflected? And then maybe we redefine affordable living or quality services, if there are themes, or maybe a new category starts to emerge that's missing today.
Council member Palmer.
I think you could move the quality services into the foundational principle, because I don't think that's ever gonna change those other items. I'm, I'm reading the first one under quality services, and I don't think that we've achieved that. So that's an area that I, I think we need to work on.
In this, in this conversation, I think it would be helpful for me if someone would define, every time the word access is there, does that simply mean that we're going to offer a program, or are we going to make sure that that program is accessible to everyone? I, I, I would really appreciate that clarity in this discussion.
Can I respond differently? Because I, I think I know where you're going with that. But I think what that means is, would you get consensus from this group that we, that that is a strategic priority to get that? And I think that's what you're asking for. I, and, and as opposed to saying, we should put it in there. We have to see if we can get consensus to that.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, all right. That, that's similar to the way I was doing this. I was kind of coming in with the idea of this time bound thing and looking at the next three years and saying, what do I think the city's really, what's the most important thing for the city to do? And I'm gonna go back to, you know, the quality execution. I, I don't know if anyone agrees with that. I haven't heard any support for it. I mean, if, but, but I mean, I don't mean, no, everyone wants it, but everyone just assumes it. History tells me it's not gonna happen with an assumption. The last three months has told me, we have gotta stay focused on this. And if our real focus is other places, I, I would submit that that's a bad place to start 2025. So.
So I've heard a, a, one thought of moving quality services off of this list and move it up to foundational principles, and then I've heard a, a call to keep it here because it's important as a, as a priority. So I think that's.
Just to clarify, I'd go with council member Palmer saying, I could, I don't need it to be quality services. It could be, but it should reflect if somebody, you know, it's one thing for us to say, well, then you look underneath this. But realize, most people scan the top things. And if they don't see those priorities in there of like, we have to do things well. And, and I'm not, in this case, I'm not talking about the normal services. I'm talking about these huge investment projects that we've never done before. It's not like the thing with like, running the parks and running these other, those are things we do on a regular basis. There's always changes. But I'm talking about making sure this staff and this council are, are agreed that we are going to do everything we can, and the main project is going to be keeping BRT and the sports center and these other things and 20, and the Broad, Sixth Street Bridge on schedule. We're not gonna say like, oh, I shouldn't say we're not gonna say. It's going to be a big deal when someone says like, yeah, we didn't make that deadline, or there's this other thing. I want that to be a big deal. I think that's a priority, a strategic priority. And I, again, if it doesn't make it, or if it's under, buried under, you know, quality services, that's okay. But I want to make that clear in this discussion or with my peers.
So I hear that that's something different. That's not really how quality services is written here. This is really about delivering on the commitments, or at least the conversations that the council has had about major initiatives in the community.
So Michelle, I'm bringing that to the table. I wanna be careful. I'm not, there's no consensus of that. And, and maybe someone else would read it, that's already up there under this. But in my view, that needs to be what I'll call the strategic priority, not a, not a line on the thing. I don't care if it's a line, but I gotta find some way to say, is that important to us? Because I'm communicating that that's important to me. And I, I think it's important to our reputation over the next two and three years, too.
So I think that's certainly a question then for this group. Is that something that you want to see as a strategic priority? We can work on the wording of it.
Yeah. And I, yeah, I, I like what I'm hearing from council member Keane, but I have a different perspective on it. I, I, and I think your perspective, what I'm reading you say, I think is extremely important. But I also think that if we're going to focus on those initiatives that are gonna be major projects over the next five to seven years, that, that how we navigate the, the development, and how we communicate with our residents on street closings and buildings going up and, and, and the, the whole process as we're going, and that's that community engagement piece. I think that needs to be a major focus of that. I don't know if that lands in an area of focus on a, a strategic priority that is in that area or somewhere else. But I think that's important. Council member Palmer.
I would agree with Mr. Keane. I think, and I'll say it maybe a little bit differently, but we have to take care of what we have. And what we have right now are three large projects coming up. What frustrates me is, is when we get a notice that the roof is bad at the rec center, or the roof is bad at the library, or the roof is bad, and we don't have any money for it. And so if you take care of what you have, and so if you take that bucket and say, these are three things that we have, that we need to complete and do it in a timely and, and phenomenally great fashion, then that's, I think, is what I agree with. So.
Can you repeat the three things or?
BRT, Sixth Street, and Sports Center.
Those are specific projects, but I think that, that idea of execution, I, I could add into the parks thing. I could add in 18th Avenue South West. There's a lot of things that I want. There's just a lot of stuff. That's what I'm.
Yeah, yeah, that's helpful.
Yeah. And even the other side of that is, with all this work mails going on, are we going to, I'm, I'm too informal here, but, I mean, are we going to be able to keep up and make sure we don't end up stalling that project for two months because of something that wasn't done right? I, I want our focus to be on that. That's what I think is a strategic priority. I don't, I don't know how it reflects on these three, on bullets. I'm, I'm not there.
Just to clarify, I, I saw it more broadly than the three. Council member one?
At least in partial support of council member Keane. And I think that we do a pretty good job on that, in large part due to a good administrator who keeps our agendas focused on council work. That is, we have seen, I think, around the country, and particularly a couple of cities nearby, that have allowed their council to stray into areas that simply do not work. There's a scathing editorial in today's Star Tribune about one of those cities. So I, I do appreciate that. We need to be strictly focused on our council work and what's going to move us ahead. A few weeks ago, a former council member came and stood before us. His view did not prevail in our vote, but one of the things he said was, you know, I sure hope that my kids stay here. And isn't that our priority as a council, is to create a Rochester where next generations can be housed, where they can raise families, if that is what they choose, where they can find employment? And I think we've got the Full Employment Act for the next 30 years, right ahead of us. So I, I would really love to see a focus on the work that is immediately ahead of us, especially if we're only talking about a four or a six-year time span for a strategic priority as opposed to a foundational principle. We can change that in, in short order.
Council member Miller.
I'll just add that I, I hear some agreement in what council president Schubert and what council member Keane are saying in this. We have to be, represent, recognize that local government is the most responsive in the state and the federal. We know that limitations and challenges are navigating the changing federal funding landscape. Some of these projects are big projects that are federally funded. If something happens there, we still have to go to our constituents, be responsive, good communicators, and meet those expectations of transparency and trust. So I, to the point about the public engagement, I think that there is an element of that, of being responsive and adaptable to changes that we cannot control. I mean, to the mayor's point as well, there are things in the affordable living space that are beyond the scope of the city to control. But there are things that we can do and focus on the basics of where we allow housing to be built, at what density, and how that interacts with the infrastructure investments that we make. So I could agree with quality services being moved up to foundational principle. I think it's right in line with what we've heard about public safety from council member Palmer and others as being transmount to our, our budget setting. But I think that there's some areas in this area of focus under quality services that aren't in that high service delivery, optimized, et cetera. I think those, for me, feel foundational. And this cultural and recreational opportunities and reflecting the needs of our community and this changing demographic feels different. It feels forward-looking planning. And I don't know if that's being responsive to all of these changes over the next five to 10 years with Unbound and other major projects, or the demographic shifts, or how those interact. But I feel like that's a different area than just the high service delivery of our existing departments, public works, others.
Other comments at this point? We've been at this for, I think, 90 minutes. Do we
Strong focus on in order to deliver on those major initiatives, transformational initiatives that are out there. So I want to test that with you. I also heard something important around community engagement. That perhaps, I don't know if that's a foundational principle or if that's a strategic priority, that all of the work that is done is reflective of engagement of the community and understanding what's important to the community as in your roles to hear what the residents, what's important to the residents. So those were just a couple of things. I wanted to put them on paper so it was easier to see as you're having some conversation. And we can continue to add to this. What are some of those other strategic priorities that you all find important? But let me pause there and certainly ask if that begins to reflect some of the conversation that you all have had so far.
I was thinking during the break on the community connections as well, and I don't want to lose it. And I tend to, and I don't know what my colleagues think, I tend to think it may be more of a foundational principle than a strategic priority. But I think from, certainly from a council member's standpoint, that's, that's the touchstone that I look to is making sure that I have the best community connections and that I'm listening to a broad spectrum of constituents. But I also see it as important to our city administration when it comes to communicating those transformational initiatives. So I think it goes across the organization. So, but I would, just so we don't lose it, I would put it in foundational principles if I was one of the advocates for it.
Yeah, and I agree with that. I think it should be a foundational principle. And we've been using the community co-design methodology, and we have learned that when we don't do that, we make mistakes, and that happens, right? So I don't want to, while it's a foundational principle, I also hope we don't lose sight that for these strategic priorities, we go back up and say, we need to pull that down and make sure that we're using a community co-design or a really broad base because it's a foundational principle, right? So I guess I'm saying I agree that it should be a foundational principle, but I don't want it to get lost like I sometimes feel like those do because they're just a given. So it will be our job to make sure that we're saying, have you looked at social equity? How is public safety? Have we communicated with the public? For the things that are strategic goals.
And just to pick up on that, Mayor, I also, I think about it, perfect examples, Councilmember Palmer mentions 311. That's a communication tool. The Rochester construction update that just went live last week, I don't know if I have it right, but that's a communication vehicle. So having as many communication vehicles that match the demographic of our public and what they expect from other, other organizations that they pull up on their devices, I think. Expectations for ensuring that we're at top focus on communication.
Under the strategic priorities that you have handwritten on the post-it note, I'm having some problem with the language "transformational initiatives," and I'm wondering if it could be like "transformational capital projects" instead of initiatives? Because in my mind, any strategic priority that we indicate is going to be transformational for someone. So if we have someone who can't live in a home now, and we work on affordable living, and they're in a home, that's transformational for them. But that's not falling into the same bucket that, that my, my fellow council member was talking about earlier.
Go ahead.
If I may introduce a different strategic priority. I mean, I think affordable living feels consistent with what I've heard, but calling out housing as the foundation of affordable living feels, especially with the Rochester Vision 2050, I heard that over and over.
So let's, let's maybe take that one. You have currently affordable living. There was a lot of conversation about needing to better define what that means, or at least having an opportunity for creating some clarity there. What I hear is perhaps changing the language, and it's not just affordable living, has something to do with housing. So if, two questions, I guess, a two-part question. Number one, is something around housing an important strategic priority that this body wants to, to see? And then if the answer to that is yes, what would you, what would you, what would you call it?
Go ahead, Councilmember.
I'll just add, I don't want to lose transportation in that, because I feel like, to Councilmember Palmer's point, you know, looking at the annual cost of car ownership, it's rising. It's maybe not the highest area of the budget, but if housing is affordable, I mean, in the other frame of drive-to-qualify, I mean, people could end up miles and tens of miles away before they find something that they qualify that fits their budget. So I don't want to lose the, the idea of affordable living. I think that housing is the highest priority within that planning. Like, if we don't have enough housing, then we don't meet the other goals, but the other goals are still important, transportation, infrastructure, investment.
I, I would agree with Councilmember Miller. I think housing needs to be called out as a part of a strategic priority if it's even, and I would be comfortable even if it was its own. I think we have more tools to, to impact housing. We all know that, you know, we're behind in the number of housing units that we should be developing. And as Councilmember Keen mentioned earlier, we're not alone as a municipality in that front, but I think it's, it, in the data that you shared today, in everything that I know I heard last year and the first quarter of this year, it really does deserve to be a strategic priority.
I would also agree with my colleagues there, and I would label it as affordable, accessible, equitable, and sustainable housing for our community.
Councilmember Miller, partly from question from the first administrator's zones, does this redirect some of, I mean, how, I almost think of it as affordable living, housing first, right? That, not losing sight of the other aspects of affordable living, when we look at, in general, what is somebody's highest cost of living? Probably housing is at the top of it. We don't keep in mind those other aspects of where the city influences, cost of transportation, access to amenities, those other elements that go with housing? I feel like that's still missing for me there.
I guess the question would be, do you keep affordable living and add affordable housing? And maybe define new things under affordable living, or looking at the economic vibrancy and growth management bucket, does growth management all maybe more under affordable housing and how is your regulatory environment with that? If there is economic vibrancy and affordable living, I think. So it draws more upon not just economic vibrancy from the perspective of like a business member, but a community member and their place in the economy and also affordable living, but it's a constant conversation.
Could we see, as we're talking about this, could we see the, the current strategic priorities yet with their areas of focus?
Mr. Cher, can I go back to my desire for this community, which has to do with active transportation, environmental issues? It gets to, you know, and we've done a lot of it through our policy setting, but unless we keep it in front of us, I'm afraid it's going to disappear. So I don't know what you want to call it, but something having to do with being environmentally aware, and, and that includes active transportation and all those other things that create an environment in a city that addresses, you know, that responds to the future needs of the people and looks ahead, not behind. So I'm, I'm open to whatever people want to call it. I just feel like it's missing from all these things. And it's felt that way for a couple of years to me, although it's polished.
Councilmember Miller.
I'll just add the reaction that I agree. And I don't know what it's called either, it's grouped with another strategic priority or combo, but I agree that that feels like an opportunity, especially as we look forward to what we want to be true 10 years in the future, an opportunity that's been innovative, planned well, met our housing needs, and I think that there's a sustainability element to all of those.
Is it, is it part of growth management? I'm, I'm wondering if that's, if that's some of the wording that you all are, and I don't know if those, those area of focus, those areas of focus reflect what you're thinking.
I guess, and I'll speak to it. I, I think it should be somewhere, I definitely, sustainability, I think of it in two different buckets. There's our, what we control, the city of Rochester, our services and being sustainable there. I think there's more control there, and so that is an area. But then there is the public, you know, moving the public, which I think is a, maybe a second point in there, but I think, I think we need to tease it out between what we can't control and what we can influence. Councilmember Palmer.
The affordable living one for me, reading everything here, I agree with, and I think transportation is important for affordability. I think the last one, I think is really important, that we have that, that ownership. It's about 26% of my pop community own a home. They're missing out on that, that ownership opportunity, that the growth of wealth for their families. And to me, that putting in transportation also makes it, makes it, I go back to that as being important for affordability. My only problem with sustainability is, is what does that mean? How are you defining sustainability?
Somebody? Councilmember Miller.
I don't know what the mayor will say. I have a thought about what you said about ownership opportunities and what building. So I'll say, I think sustainability is, is the planning core. I mean, we're already seeing, just in the national space, that geothermal projects are rapidly improving and declining the cost. And so when we think about even affordability of our energy, heating and cooling, I mean, 10 years from now, it's going to be a drastically different space than today. I know RPU is doing a lot of energy transition work, but I just think some of these emerging technologies that came up in the AI innovation, I think if we don't focus on the transformational work and there's a sustainability lens to how we plan for housing, where housing can be built, where it can rely on existing infrastructure, for the tax base, leveraging our tax base, planning for the future tax base, making sure that we're not disproportionately impacting seniors and other people who are paying increasing property taxes. I mean, all of that planning feels related to me. I think of sustainability as the unified lens of planning transportation, housing, and building some wins on their financial sustainability side. But I almost don't want to link those, and I know they are linked to the foundational principles, because I think they're related, but they're separate focus.
Councilmember Palmer.
I'm confused by Mr. Miller. What, I mean, you started out with geothermal, and then you started out with what we can and can't do, or what's going to happen in the future, and then you went to where it can be built. And I don't, I don't quite follow that conversation. I know that looking at our census, that in the last 10 years, we've only grown one square mile. And so are you saying we're not going to grow at all? Or are you saying that we're going to grow, what do you mean by sustainability and grow?
And I'll, I'll use this as an opportunity to, in affordable living, say that, building on what you said, with increasing ownership opportunities for people who are long-term residents, I think we are missing people in our community who are renting, either because they're here for a short-term job, they're, you know, starting a career. How are we making affordable renting? Like, again, not saying that the only people that get affordable housing are those that we're building ownership opportunities for, but how are we focusing on this population? We've been a, you know, a family that's moved for educational opportunities. We have a large, a significant part of our community that is in some field of medical training, either as a student, as a trainee, others, and I don't see that represented here. And what I see in the sustainability point, Councilmember Palmer, is that people are increasingly looking for opportunities to live close to work, either for sustainability reasons or simply for convenience. And I think it intersects here where we're allowing additional housing density, other projects to be built, as we're looking forward to what kind of community we're becoming. So again, these are going to cross.
Okay, now, Councilmember Palmer, you had your hand up again, but maybe we want to...
Well, I'm just, I'm just going off the facts, and the fact that the Maxwell study says that we dwell in apartments, and I'm not against apartments, and, and that we need to have more single-family dwellings. And I think that the rationale for me is, when public works says that we provisioned sewer in this area, and that's where development's going to go, that makes sense to me. I don't want, say, we're going to put it in X, I don't want to go over here in C because somebody says I want to be over in C. I want to do it smartly and move to that. But to think that our borders aren't going to decrease, or you're not going to have more single-family, which, if you have a study that says you need more, then we should, we should follow that study. That's, that's where, and sustainability to me would be more of a, if I'm building a home or apartment building, am I putting in geothermal? Am I putting on solar in the panels? Am I doing something? On the, on the other flip side of that is, Minnesota is the second-best energy code in the United States, period. It's the best. And it started in the early 90s, and we've insulated our homes, and we've invested in that, because we saw as a, as a state that that was important. That's sustainability to me. And so that's why I'm asking what the definition is.
Do you want to, I'm sorry, I can put my two cents in too, and then you can pick up your side. I guess I, I think now, we've got three words up there, sustainability, growth management, affordable living. I think of sustainability in the environmental sense as, you know, what we're doing at RPU, what we are doing if we, if we have a strategic priority on sustainability, are we using sustainability as one of the chits for our tools in, in, with developers? And are we, our services, are we moving to EV vehicles? Are we putting solar panels being on our property, our city properties? Growth management I see as where, I think, Councilmember Miller's points of, as far as a smart growth, that where we, the growth management is focusing on being able to do in more infill development and on some of our sites that we're not able to because of our infrastructure issues there. So, so I think there's overlap to those two that I don't know if they need to be teased out, or do we need to tease them out more? Councilmember Miller, go ahead.
Just to add, on the sustainability, looking statewide at our greenhouse gas emissions, transportation is the biggest source of GHU emissions. So making sure that transportation is part of sustainability, in my view. And I think that the energy efficiency of homes and building structures is important. I would also just add that, Councilmember Palmer, you mentioned single-family homes and apartment buildings. There's, there are formats between those that I think are important. And I would talk about ADUs. A couple of years ago, the council adopted an ADU incentive program. I checked this out recently. I hope I'm not misspeaking anyone, please correct me, but zero projects have qualified for that incentive program. We indicated a preference for some infill, some flexibility in the housing space. We haven't gotten there, so is that no longer a priority, or should we evaluate that in our strategic priority, where we're encouraging and incentivizing infill development that doesn't require new sewer investment into any of the sectors, but could be supported by existing infrastructure? And that's what I mean by sustainability to, we're being sustainable with the investments we've already had made and maximizing what housing can be built on top of that.
What I wrote here is just trying to hear or summarize a little bit of what I heard. I wrote "sustainable growth management." And what I, what I believe I heard was that, at least in concept, this is really about planning for, how to ensure that you have the right planning in place. And that includes transportation, as well as a lot of the other issues that were mentioned. And then I also heard in, in the conversation, some interest in maintaining a strategic priority on affordable living. It may not look the same here. It's in addition to something specifically about housing, but how to, how to maintain a priority around affordable living. So this is just me trying to capture some of the thoughts that I heard, not saying that there's clear consensus on these things, but would be interested in, in your feedback on, on that as a summation of some of the comments we discussed.
Mayor?
Yeah, I would say yes. I have zero problem with sustainable growth management. I think it's something that is absolutely necessary as we go. But what I'm talking about when we talk about sustainability and environmental stewardship is bigger than that. And it's difficult to define, the sustainable development goals that we talk about broadly, there's dozens of them. It's, it's a big area. The, the place where it does fit with affordable living is if we don't do these things, if we allow homes to be built that are done cheaply, or we don't do some of the sustainable development things that will help, whether it be trees and not having heat deserts and some of those things, it costs those who have the least ability to pay for it. So yes, that helps with affordable living, but if we just do that and we don't call out or pull down that environmental stewardship, and it's bigger than that. It is really about sustainability. It is about building codes. It is about city design, and it is about RPU and the work that they're doing. If we don't call it out differently than that, it will be lost again.
So do you have, do you have some suggestions of what, what that might be called? Just to understand the difference between sustainable growth management...
Sustainability and environmental stewardship, or something, because it gets to energy. It's, it's about what our RPU has committed to the policy that the previous board and this board, I think, supports for, you know, having been, you know, 100% renewable energy. We have that by 2030. We're, we're heading in that direction. And so it's bigger and broader than just the things you have, but those, I don't have any problem with those. I just, I'd have to give a little more thought to a name, if we're looking for that name that makes sense. I just don't want to lose time.
Again, I'm writing these down just so we don't lose, lose the thoughts.
Yep. And that environmental sustainability is a good placeholder, and maybe the fine final thing, I don't know.
And this is in addition to the foundational principle of environmental stewardship? Or are you suggesting it get removed from the foundational principle and move to a...
I think it needs to be a short-term strategic goal for the next five years, whether it stays up in foundational principles in a different format. I mean, I don't, that's not bad. Sustainability isn't bad, but it needs to be actionable just on the short term.
I agree with the mayor's point on that. I, and I'm an advocate of community connections, and I did advocate for putting it on foundational principles, but I worry it's going to get lost. That I think, I think there's a, and it's not, I think it's all of us, we think that's already done, or we're doing that stuff. And so the way I look at the strategic priorities are a little more actionable. So I would advocate for that. I would keep my community connections where they are, but maybe two years from now, I'm going to get down.
Yeah, I can hope.
Administrator's... First off, there's some historical context. So not on either of the slides that you're seeing, this was a discussion at the council when we were giving the last strategic priorities. There was an underpinning sort of one that wasn't a strategic priority, it wasn't a foundational principle, but was strategic governance and inclusive decision-making. So what that talked about with decision-making is informed by citywide communication and engagement strategy with diversity, equity, inclusion at the forefront, teammates create action plans and annual commitments, like communicate about policy and operational actions reflect affordable community investment. Like, I think it might be what you're getting at.
Where is it?
Did it make its way into a priority?
Where is it?
On this dialogue. It's, it's on the very bottom of the page, like you see.
Oh, there we go.
I don't think it's in your slide, though, because it's not in the graphic. Oh, it is. So, but it just didn't, in this discussion last time, make its way to a priority foundation. It made its way on the page, because we made the graphic, that's not...
All right. Other thoughts? Anything new that people don't see either reflected in the previous strategic priorities and funded foundational principles? Councilmember...
I think at least three people, two to my left and one to my right, have talked about, I think in the area of affordability, affordable living, living within our means, I think I heard. I heard taxes from a couple. I think about being able to stay in your homes as a retired person. I think that really is a part of our affordability as well, to keep high in, in mind for our council.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Is that referring to fiscal financial sustainability of the city organization, or is that for individuals within the community?
It's for, it's for individuals, so that they can afford to live here.
So part of affordable living is ensuring that people are able to...
Currently that it's named. I think it's important that it's named for our council, that our fiscal responsibility, which is numbered in the blue, also becomes really a prior strategic priority for us as well, to pull Mr. Keen to live within our means.
And I'm sorry, I'm just clarifying myself. So live, so under affordable living, you want to ensure that residents are able to live within their means?
No, that we are, that we, we are paying attention to our decisions, so that people are able to afford a living in our community.
Got it, okay.
I'll make a comment here, that again, we have that on our strategic priorities. When you expand what it means underneath, it doesn't always tie directly back. But I think you bring up a good point, that just carrying it as our strategic priorities is an important communication thing, too, and it should affect our decision-making. And with any of these, God help us, if it doesn't have to, we can ignore them when it comes down to it. But that's what we're trying to do here, is put guidelines, not just for staff, but much more for our decision-making.
All right, I want to comment on the environmental sustainability. I want to make sure, and this is where it gets down to the magic that the staff in these, your group will have to do afterwards, but I could, I could look at strategic priorities and say that they're in conflict, because the strategic priorities of housing and affordable and affordable, a lot of times that what we see as sustainable is driving cost in some of those things. And that's got to be balanced somewhere there. I don't have a problem with the idea of like carrying it, but I, I could also read it as conflicting. The other thing is, we, we have a sustainability, you know, initiatives, and it appears that we take on some of them, and they're big, like we'll do the geothermal, and it was a, you know, a major thing. And then you've got RPU trying to work towards this, you know, energy development program that's, that's expensive to do. But it appears that as soon as you make that decision, the next question is, what's next? There's another one on the list, and it doesn't seem to ever end. So I worry about having it in the strategic priorities, because it sort of will imply to somebody that we're going to do all these things. And at a decision-making thing, I, I worry about that.
I think your point about conflicting priorities is a really important one. And I don't know that I've ever seen a strategic plan for a community... And I don't know that I've ever seen a strategic plan for a community that didn't have conflicting priorities, because you have a very dynamic community. And that's why you have a robust conversation around these topics, because there are lots of differing opinions and ideas and needs in your community, and some of them will certainly conflict. Absolutely. And you have to weigh those as you make your decisions that come before you as a body.
I'm going to do a time check here. So it is 20 minutes to six. We have one additional agenda item. Our partners from DMC are here, and I've let them know that they can have a half hour, and that would be six to 6:30. So we've got 20 minutes for this. That doesn't mean we can't come back to this and some other session. I'm looking at Administrator's zones for affirmation on that.
I'm pretty sure that we have affirmation about we won't be voting on this at equal.
So we've got 20 minutes further for discussion. So if you have something that's not on there, or you want to stress your point, I think the format, we're putting a lot down here, on here, and we may not all agree, we're not voting today on this, but if it's not up here in 20 minutes, it's going to be probably more difficult to insert something new. So with that, Councilmember Keen.
Again, we've spent about 125 minutes of us in the elects. I guess I would like to go to the professionals and probably City Administrator's zones, but are there big things we're missing? Are there things that we should think about as far as the, with this idea of time scoping the next three years, next 36 months, that we will, what kind of things could help us do guidance on things? And if there's somebody from your staff that maybe in your discussions has sort of disagreed with this or wants something else, is there any sort of, like, counterbalance that you could provide just to help us think about what we're doing?
I guess I would say maybe two things. One is more in the city Rochester space, which is be thinking about, like, within some of these, like, there are some complete, like, there are some things you could push on across the organization that would be challenging for some people's worldview, but might change how, like, the private development world develops affordable housing relative to infrastructure and things like that, that doesn't necessarily align across all the present service areas. So like, how, I think it would be helpful to understand, like, what are the levers that you're looking at in your lens of pushing the needle here and what you're willing to kind of take on as policy topics within this? Secondarily, I notice a lot of post-it notes over here, so I don't know if there was maybe a thought process that the facilitator would facilitate, like what you did last time, kind of good discussion, but is there a way to, if only one post-it note ends up on some of these?
Yeah.
Does that tell us something about where there's an alignment? Or, I don't know, usually post-it notes mean something.
Alison, can I...
Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, you mentioned the white letters, the white writing that was underneath the action plans in the other. Is that something that you were suggesting we should think about moving up? Because it didn't make it last time or not? Because I thought I heard some interest in that, but it's not up on the...
So it was the community connections sort of conversation?
That's how it's defined, okay.
And it made its way on as sort of an underpinning of how you would approach your decision-making, because these are conflicting priorities sometimes. So that was a question for the group. Should it end up as a priority? Is it okay to have it? Our thought at the time was this should be spanning how these decisions come back to and be thinking about that, that your role in this, each time you get a decision before you in a policy item or something, is, you know, does that resonate with the elected body? That that's how you hope to look at decision-making collectively? If it's not, it probably needs to be tweaked or taken off.
I just didn't want it to get lost, because it's not...
Yeah, it's up there.
I didn't know if that was, yeah, if that was enough of it.
Yeah.
Okay, the community connections.
Yeah.
But is it a foundational principle, or is it how you approach your work? How this council, which might be different in 10 years or five years, wants to explain the lens within which you're approaching your decision-making and the governance?
I guess this is how, since I was one of the advocates for that, how I would explain that and why I wanted either foundational principles or strategic priorities is not so much on how we think, the seven of us and the mayor, but on how you and your staff think about it. Because for me, I can speak for myself, I'm an elected official. I connect with the residents, the constituents. I will do that in my own time. I want our team to be thinking about those community connections as well. Not at the same level or in the same way that I do, but when we make decisions, when we inform our residents that there are shifts and changes to how they get to work in that, or any of the multiple services we provide. So I want it to be in a place where our team sees it.
That sounds more like a priority, but it's like question about the council.
Other things that folks want to address?
Can I have a little clarity on what you're asking us for, Council President?
What I'm asking for in the...
Yeah, do you want us to just throw stuff out on a sheet of paper so it's there? So we can talk about it further at a different...
I guess I would defer to our facilitator what works for you and for our administration to have enough for us to come back with.
I will go back to, certainly, I go back to the question earlier. You currently have three strategic priorities. Are there others, or are those the right ones? You all have spent some time saying that some of them need some tweaking. You've moved some, at least for purposes of this conversation. You've moved quality services over to a foundational principle. You've somewhat replaced it with delivering on transformational capital projects. You've talked about housing as being an important strategic priority. I would like to just ask for some clarity around sustainable growth management, just to understand a little bit more about what that meant, as you all talked about it. You talked about affordable living, similar to the way that you currently have it with some modifications and a focus on paying attention to the decisions that the council makes to help ensure that people are able to live within their means. And then you've also talked about a potential strategic priority around environmental stewardship and sustainability. So the question I would have then is, are there others, back to your three that you have, you've talked around those, are there other ones that you haven't discussed that you think are important to raise to the group as priorities?
For example, economic vibrancy doesn't really show up in the current study you have at this point. They're both there, but we haven't talked about it at all today. So does it stay?
Okay, if I were trying to assess what happened in this meeting, I don't think it does.
Oh, I would, certainly.
I understand.
Can we go back to the areas of focus so we can see that? I had a discussion with Administrator's zones at the break on, I wanted to know the history of why economic vibrancy and growth management were together. I think I, so the sustainable growth management, I think, is an important strategic priority. So I'm good with that there. I'm not clear on our role in economic vibrancy. And I don't know, I look at Councilmember Keen as the historian on this, so why is it there?
Yeah, there was a lot, some of it is the point in time. There was a lot of things about, like, is there, you know, the one, we're the one industry community, and we shouldn't be. And there was, so I think some of that was driving. But in this, that, and growth management, the emphasis was on management side. It wasn't on growth. It was on making sure it's, like, it's not out of control growth. It wasn't this idea of, like, yeah, come here and do whatever you want. It was because of the impacts to neighborhoods. It was the impacts, it was things like that going on. So I don't want to try to, you know, I don't have the things in front of me of, like, what everybody was thinking with it.
No, I know.
But, yeah, frankly, part of this is, you've got our people we've hired to listen to these discussions and our staff have to come back and sort of boil this down to something now. And then at that point, we'll have to look at it and say, yeah, that's what I was thinking as opposed to, like, oh, no, I had it coming back differently. But that's what I...
Thank you.
And I would add on, the economic vibrancy, I think we need to remember the timeframe that we're talking about. This is post-pandemic. When we were doing this at the time of the pandemic and post-pandemic, trying to say, how are we going to come back? I think we're still there. I don't think we're done with this. I think if you talk, like, this morning, the downtown businesses, they're still struggling. They want us to continue to do things that keep our economy vibrant, not just downtown, throughout the whole city. But I don't think we're, I would feel uncomfortable taking it out where we sit today, post-pandemic, because I think most of the businesses will tell you we're not where we want to be right now. So that, I'm afraid it would send the wrong message. That's just my...
Councilmember Dory.
Yeah, so I'm going to follow the lead of Councilmember Keen and just throw something out there, because it's resting on my heart. Public safety should be a strategic priority. Public safety, we certainly need to make sure that we continue to provide resources to our first responders, but we also need to make sure that everyone in our community feels safe. The circles that I run in, our BIPOC community does not feel safe. Our LGBTQIA+ community does not feel safe. Our immigrant community does not feel safe. How are we cultivating a culture where everyone feels safe?
Thank you, Councilmember Dory.
Yeah.
Councilmember Miller.
I just add, under quality services, the first area of focus, I don't see necessarily represented in these. And I think it goes to Councilmember Dory's point of where are people able to connect and build community and cultural, recreational opportunities and provide access and equity. Remember, you know, other drivers of economic vibrancy, there've been festivals, you know, people being able to do events in our community, don't necessarily cost the city a lot of money, other than just prioritizing that use of public space. I think it's important somewhere in this, you know, does it rise to a strategic priority? Is it maybe represented in community engagement, community connection somewhere, so that the lens of how we're doing these things is reflective of our community? I don't know, I just want to highlight that I feel like that's important, because I think it showed up in data diversifying the community, changing demographics. I just want to make sure we don't lose sight of needing to provide public space and enable community connection.
We want everything.
We want everything.
Any other comments? Thoughts?
Final comment.
In the subtext of the equity included, again, I think about accessibility in that white space below, just highlighting accessibility is a core lens that we're looking at this. I know, again, we have social equity, it doesn't quite say accessibility, but it probably spiritually belongs there, right? But I think it's important that we think about where that fits in and our strategic priorities and how, again, to Councilmember Dory's point about housing, right, there are additional factors, maybe those are part of it, maybe those are foundational principles, but just thinking about the accessibility of our public space, accessibility of housing, accessibility of transportation.
Okay, well, any closing comments?
I think what we will do, based on this conversation, is work with staff to take what we've written as well as what we've heard and put something together for you all to react to. Certainly, it is draft and needs to be in your words. You all need to be comfortable with it, but at least we can take a good conversation that you had today and give you something back that you can take a look at and make additional changes if necessary.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, thanks for being here.
Can I just give you a little bit of a link? That slide that Councilmember Keen went to, that talked about a current definition and what the outcome would look like within that space? Maybe you kept that on your mind after your discussion today, like, between now and the next time we talk.
All right, we are going to take a three-minute break and come back at six and hear from your partners at DMC.
Thank you. Patrick.
Thank you, Council President Schubert and members of City Council. I want to just thank you for Allison for working to make space on your very busy set of study session agendas and schedules coming up. We know that you had a full discussion today and we appreciate it being here to listen and sort of tag into that. I do want to acknowledge, I have two of our staff who are here just to make sure that we know who they are, Jamie Rothie, many of you have interacted with her, and Mike Flynn, who some of you have met and worked with in the past. I do want, somebody said to me, is this slide deck out of order? And I just want to start by saying thank you. I just want to start by saying thank you. One, for the opportunity to be here. Secondly, for the incredible partnership and collaboration we've had with your staff over the years and for several of the City Council members and the mayor with whom I've worked very closely over the years and now the new members of City Council whom I spend time with individually. So starting with saying thank you for that collaboration and the work together. And then I, again, seemingly out of order, I really wanted to just get questions on the table so that I understood what's on your minds and make sure that whatever formal presentation I deliver gets to the questions that are on your mind and that you're not patiently waiting for me to get through slides to really get to the questions on your mind. So with your indulgence, Council President Schubert, I thought we might just take a moment and just for me to hear from councilmembers questions that they have so that I can be sure to field those or address them at some point during this.
Well, I'll start. I wonder if you could talk a little bit about, and I'll give councilmember Frederick credit for bringing this up at a council meeting a couple of sessions ago, the cadence between decisions that happen at the DMCC board and the City Council, the cadence and kind of, you know, what is the best practice as far as, as far as as decisions arise, where they go and to DMCC board, which the mayor and I sit on, and come to the council?
Yeah, I am aware of that and I did really hear that comment from a couple of weeks ago, so I know what you're referring to.
Councilmember Wall.
I sent some questions beforehand and got a really nice response that I had only time to run, just to do a brief run-through, and it's really good information about projects that we probably haven't talked about at the council level very much of late and would encourage that information to be shared with the whole council.
Okay, thank you. Questions about Riverfront Sixth Street, number 11 in West Transit Village?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I sent a few questions beforehand too. I was particularly interested about the Berkman and the BRIC and that the private partnerships there and whether affordability was built into that. I know on the BRIC website it talks about affordable units, but those affordable units don't seem to be occupied at this point, if I was looking at the data correctly last evening before I sent that question. So I'm just wondering if that affordability is, can be baked into future developments in terms of housing? And then the second one was regarding the heart of the city development. Again, I'm getting bombarded, maybe five passages or so a week about the Peace Plaza and I'm on board with trying our temporary fix. Just what is the capacity for the temporary fix for the proposed fix doesn't work for DMC to partner with the city to create a more equitable solution for the community? Yeah.
Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, so one thing I'm interested in today, as a, again, longer-term observer of DMC, I've watched in 2015 to 2020 what the sort of types of projects and the priorities were with discovery and with public ground and then, and also hospitality, growing the hospitality industry so that we could have a destination medical. Over time, it's changing and we're 2025, 10 years past, 10 years to go. And I feel that there is some new priorities in there and I'd like to feel that I could leave you a better understanding of as such change.
Great. Mayor?
Yeah. I just want to, it's more of a statement than a question, which is, I just want to provide a little history perspective with regard to the Destination Medical Center decision-making treaty, if you will. Initially, when the bill was written, it had zero approval by the City Council. It was initially written so that the DMCC board and the DMCEDA could decide on what they wanted to do as long as it wasn't in, as long as it fit within the city's long-term strategic plan or it was in there, it didn't violate any of those, you know, it was, you had nothing to do with it. So we threw that sausage making that happens up at the Capitol, came up, tried to come up with a middle ground. And so we're kind of an experiment. They didn't want it to be the Iron Range, I triple R B, they didn't think that was working and I think has since been changed. They were trying to find a way to make sure that the council had some control over it, but this is like in a way, it's an experiment. We're, you know, Patrick and Lisa before, and the team is trying to figure out how to do this in a way that works so that the City Council has a say about what's happening. But I think to the question that was raised is, what's the right timeline to weigh in so that we don't get too far down the line where money is spent? And so I'll be interested to see, you know, what your thoughts are about this, but I just wanted to lay that perspective. What Patrick and the team are doing is something that hadn't been done before and it may not be perfect. So, you know, Patrick, you can go ahead with that, but I just thought I'd give you the history perspective. There was no input in the initial bill, zero.
Any other questions, councilmembers?
Well, more may come up throughout this and I know we have until 6:30. And so let me just, first of all, start by saying, the work we're doing is a team sport. And so while today we're talking about DMC, just know that I fully understand that nothing gets done in this community without lots of people working together. And DMC, oops, sorry. So DMC is one of many players, and I don't have everybody on here that we partner with, so I'll just say that upfront, but these are many of the partners that we work with. And so just understanding, I know and appreciate that and I know and appreciate that this is a collaborative effort that we're going through. And so I use this slide as a reminder of why DMC. And this was, really the origins of DMC was, here we are, home to the number one hospital in the world. And I'll just say that again, the number one hospital in the world here in Rochester, Minnesota. And it was intended to grow and it was committed to growth, but it needed, and the city felt it needed support to enable Rochester's growth to keep pace with Mayo Clinic's growth. And that was really the origin of the DMC initiative. How can Rochester grow to be a better version of itself in keeping with Mayo Clinic's growth? I do want to go to the, a couple of slides that I think help tell the story of the sequencing of decision-making. And this is perhaps more bureaucratic and convoluted way of, it's not really convoluted, it is what it is. But I think what I, what I really want to say is that there should not be, there should not be a surprise, there should never be a surprise at City Council related to a DMC action. And the way that we can ensure that there isn't a surprise is, sorry, managing this. There is sort of a way in which we approach our work. One is, we have a development framework that was created in 2015, updated in 2020, and going through an update right now that is a joint effort between the city and DMC to create a framework, a set of recommendations, a belief system about the future development. And it will lean into the kind of strategic planning discussion you're having today, it'll lean into the 2050 visioning work you did with the community, it will tap into the growth plans of the University of Minnesota Rochester, it will reflect Bull Ford Unbound and its vision and its direction, it'll reflect the waterfront planning that's been done and lots of, so it itself will not stand alone, but it simply will be additive to all of the great work that's happened over the last several years. So that's the beginning of how we are ensuring that there are no surprises. And then annually, there is a budget that is created between DMC and the city. And that budget is, you know, an interactive process, the joint work group, city staff involvement, mayor, council president. And that gets approved at DMC, it gets approved at City Council. So again, another checkpoint, are we on path? Does this ladder up to this development plan we created? And then, and then that becomes ultimately projects that have to happen, executing on those, on those projects. And again, there, it's work between our staffs, your staff and the DMC staff. And again, we would expect that as we bring it to DMC, that DMC is not surprised and as we bring it to the City Council, you're not surprised. So I think that's our way of trying to reflect on and ensure that we're not getting too far out ahead of DMC and we're also keeping up with the vision and goals of the city. And I can give you some examples where I think it's worked really well. And it's been an evolution from the beginning. I wasn't around for the legislation, legislative journey, but certainly in the early days, I think there was growing pains about how does DMC fit into the decision-making process of the city? And I think we are in a much better place today than we were certainly 10 years ago. Wondering if that helps answer that question or if there's comments or questions about this.
Sounds good.
I wanted to just clarify, I'll call it a question, but when I look at a chart like this and see DMC plus the city, DMC EDA and the city working together on something and then one group approves it, the yes and yes, I guess I want to clarify, DMC is a planning organization or DMC EDA is a planning organization. The city or somebody else does the projects, is that accurate?
Yeah, that's absolutely accurate.
Okay, can you talk to that for a second? Because I think there's, even when I first saw things coming forward, it was sort of like, oh, DMC is doing this and I hear those sort of terms. The fact is, I don't think DMC doesn't build the Peace Plaza the city does.
Yeah, I think a good distinction. DMC really does two things. We steward through recommendations the $585 million of commitment that has been made of which much of that is, portion of that has been committed, about half of that has been committed to date. And so our job is to steward that and then the other half of our work is to attract new private investment to Rochester. And that, the private investment leadership work comes from Mike Flynn, who, again, many of you have met, not everybody, and our stewardship of public funds is this process that I've described. But yeah, we don't have a construction department at DMC.
Yeah. And I just, I wanted to make that point because I, I mean, again, it's probably clear to everybody here, but I don't think it's clear to everyone in the community. It's almost like things that DMC does, and they do things like with, as an EDA would do, but when the project is done with DMC funding, it's done by city employees.
City employees are in the private sector and as long as I have this slide up and it's pursuant to the question, councilmember Dory, and I asked about Berkman and Brick and affordable housing, since that's the image.
Can you go to councilmember Palmer?
I just want to give a good example. We've talked about this before, but Soldiers Field, oh, we did a plan, we said this is what we wanted and DMC said, we will fund up to this amount. So you were a partner in doing that. To me, you never once said, we want you to do this, this, this. You said, come up with a plan, we'll help fund it.
Yeah, if I could put a little nuance to that. So that's an example of a project that was found in the DMC development plan. So the starting point was that it was in the DMC development plan. This idea of creating high-quality recreation and outdoor activity venue in that, in that area was in the DMC development plan. So that's the starting point. And then you all said, we're ready to go with this and because we have federal money identified, we have this parks referendum money, we have some other state money, so we're ready to go and we can make it a better thing if DMC could, would be willing to participate. And then it got into our, into our budget, so it got into our budget cycle. And you all presented a plan that met the values of DMC around equity and inclusion and accessibility and lots of, lots of things that we said are important, which you came back with. And that's where it landed into this approval. So that's really a good example. And I think an evolution of where we were perhaps 10 years ago with Peace Plaza, and we're going to get to that topic, but Peace Plaza being an example where I think we were out front and we were leading and even though it was a joint project, it may not have felt that way in the same way that Soldiers Field does. So could I go to a question that you asked about affordable housing? So DMC and the city together have been involved in about 10 or 15 housing projects, developments in the downtown, downtown adjacent area over the past less than 10 years. And they're really, and some of those projects are, were done with using tax increment financing as a tool. And in the early days of many of those projects, we did not, we, and so we, meaning the city or the, or DMC or the city, did not require affordability in all of those projects. But there were many that were First Avenue flats, flats on Fourth, you know, a list of money that had an affordability component to it. Berkman did not, that was one of the earliest projects, didn't get delivered until 2020, but it was one of the earliest projects. Brick on Broadway, in fact, the entire building is developed at an affordability. And that affordability is a very unique model in that the commitment was by the developer that the entire building, all of the units would be at affordability levels of 50%, 60% and 80% AMI. And they, they have been successful with the 50% AMI and they've been successful with the 60% AMI. And they've had difficulty with the 80% AMI and they've come back to the city and DMC because there were conditions put onto it. So to your point, there were conditions, so they had to come back. And what they said is, incomes in Rochester have increased faster than the data. So, meaning salaries went up for a number of sort of middle-income positions, entry-level positions, perhaps at Mayo Clinic, I'm going to not be quite precise about this, but the, so they're getting applicants who are slightly above the 80%. And the data legs in terms of what represents 80% AMI. So the data is behind by a couple of years to the reality. So what they said is, we think we have units that are vacant because we don't have enough people earning 80% or below. people earning 80% or below. Would you be open to increasing the income eligibility to 110% while keeping the rents at 80%? So they are not benefiting financially from having this income eligibility expansion, but, because they can only, still only charge 80% AMI. So I think we're all looking for solutions about how to, much of your discussion today was about affordable living and affordable housing, I think we're all looking for solutions. And as somebody said, this is a national problem, this is, this is not a Rochester-only problem, and so people, we're all looking for what are some solutions to get more price-sensitive housing on the market, and this is, the downtown is going to be largely multifamily, it's really not a single-family, you know, area of single-family housing.
Thank you.
Can I ask, though, the second part of your question that I think I heard, and maybe the answer was there and I missed it, but that it isn't full? Do we know if that's the case, or did the change allow them to fill the building?
My understanding is they, I tried to reach out to the developer today, and I didn't, I didn't connect. My fault, not his, but my understanding is the 50 and 60% has been full, and they have had success in leasing the 80%.
By changing that, of course.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And of course, match day was last Friday, which is a big day in Rochester from a rental, from a housing rental environment, and so they wanted to be ready for match day as they would, they, like a lot of people, just they know there will be a big influx of inquiries. I'd like to get to, as long as I'm here, the second question regarding Peace Plaza. I know there's lots of discussion in the community about Peace Plaza, and it is not as perfect as I would have hoped it would be, I don't think it's as imperfect as some people make it out to be. I think we do have an obligation to try to remedy the experience yet this summer, and the city staff are committed to doing that, and we need to lean into really being committed to making that work, and I know some people have already predicted it won't work, and that's a pretty difficult environment to work in.
I understand completely.
Pardon me?
I understand completely.
So, but I know the city staff are very committed to the improvements, and I think some things get conflated about the experience at Peace Plaza. Some of it has to do with, some of it is design, some of it was execution, and some of it is maintenance, and I think we need to address all three of those. And I think we'll come back in September and have a conversation about how's it working and what are the next steps. And I think we've proven to be a faithful partner to the city and all of these initiatives, and can't promise anything, but I can promise partnership. Looking at the questions, Councilmember Wall asks for some feedback. I know you were traversing between City Hall and here, and so, of course, you didn't have a chance to read your emails.
Yes, I was. Yeah, I got a chance to, to experience Rochester's newest closed doors.
Twice, you got to experience it, you got to experience it twice. How do I find the mic, Lane? So there were questions, updates that Councilmember Wall requested about Sixth Street Bridge and waterfront, and Cindy, you rightfully responded, given the city is taking a lead on those two projects in particular. The third one that was asked about is West Transit Village, and I'd be happy to tackle that one, but Cindy.
Sure, and I apologize, I realize I missed West Transit Village in the response. So in terms of riverfront, lots of, lots of work happening at our staff level, just really quick rundown, and I'm happy to provide this in the follow-up information to the city administrator. And that is, of course, in your legislative priorities, we have requested additional riverfront planning, money, the goal of that is to, is to better enhance the connections to not only downtown, UMR, city services, regional attractions, leverage of downtown as a destination, kind of tie together the planning work that's happening around Government Center, as well as around some of our other riverfront assets like the Ambe site, which is a privately, private development. In terms of the former Ambe site, they currently have a general development plan for that site, they have inquired, they have a lease with the city for parking that goes till 2027, they've made an inquiry to the city about, there's a limit in the number of parking spaces, they want to revise that, Ryan Yetzer is running point on those negotiations, we have a lot of questions around what that would look like and what requirements we would contemplate to even consider an expansion of temporary parking on that site. I would also note that the north end of that site is the location for the easternmost transit location for link rapid transit, so we've acquired almost all the remaining parcels, expect that to be completed soon, and then there's some other stuff related to Sixth Street I can talk about. In terms of the riverfront site by the former Legends site and Mr. Huffler's site, all around the government center, Steve Santa Brown, Director of Construction, submitted an application in partnership with our consultants in DC, Sustainable Strategies DC, to the state MPCA office, they have $2 million to give up statewide, we got $500,000 of that, and that goal is to do some interim activation, including a bike node on the, a portion of the former Legends site where there is a lot of hardscape right now, and introduce greenscape as well as a bike node, one does not exist along our trail system outside of the parks, and so we see this as a real, really great opportunity to leverage the close proximity, particularly to UMR students. We are working, we have an analysis, an economic analysis that we received, helped funded by DMC from the Hunden Group, to help us determine what kind of actions we should take related to this redevelopment site, particularly in the economic climate that we're in, and some of the more recent impacts of the executive boards and how that might be activating, or impacting development. RDA and DMC, with RDA leading, are helping us plan some other interim activities, not only interim activities that we want to do as a result of the interim development, the MPCA grant, but interim activities to activate that riverfront at nights and weekends, particularly with the proximity to MPCA, or with UMR, and so lots of conversation and dollars already programs to begin and implement that yet this summer. And then adjacent to it, the work being led by Irene Woburn Community Development Department was the planning for the historic district and its connection to the riverfront, recently went through a process and awarded to Mend Collective, is the firm designing the streetscape effort for there. In terms of Sixth Street, riverfront, and Neighborhood Safety Improvement Program, we're actually planning to come to you at the April 21 city council meeting. Our goal is to come under the reports and recommendations and provide you with an update on the extensive neighborhood engagement that we have had since last summer fall, Howitton forming the design prior to coming to, and there's three main components to the design, it's the bridge design, it's the complete street design, and it's the design of the riverfront amenities, we're going to walk you through that. Prior to that, however, we are scheduling an internal banking engineering session, might have, you know, some of the recent bidding environment, we want to do that to make sure that we're in alignment with project goals and budget. We have to do this work, ultimately, we need to submit to MINDOT in December of 2025 because there's a MINDOT review that happens with this project, and all of those things have to be completed. I would also note that this project is, has federal funding associated with it, we are currently not under contract with, we do not have an agreement yet with the feds related to this project, we still feel very positive that we will have an agreement, and we were following MINDOT's guidance on that, have continued to follow MINDOT's guidance on that. And then I would also say, lastly, there's a rail spur that traverses both riverfront redevelopment sites, we've had some really good conversations with the railroad, as well as the two businesses that use the rail spur, and how that may or not be impacted by anticipated development of these areas over the next couple of years. So at a very high level, that's where we're at with riverfront and Sixth Street projects.
Mr. Sheriff, I could just have a couple more minutes, and I understand our goal was, your goal was to be done by 6:30, and I think this may go to, in part, to Councilmember Keane's questions about evolving priorities. One thing that we don't give a lot of visibility to at the council table or at the council discussion is our role around attracting private investment. So if you think about, the infrastructure that we steward is to position Rochester to grow, this work is to help intentionally pursue and attract growth, and we're really focusing on three domains. One is the medtech space, attracting companies to Rochester and growing companies in Rochester in the medtech space. Housing and hotels, this is the infrastructure we know that a destination medical, medical community needs, is hospitality environment and housing, or its workforce, and then retail dining and entertainment. Again, we know that there's an appetite for more investment in retail dining and entertainment in the downtown. We have what we call a grow our own strategy and attract new strategy, and so our work really focuses on how do we facilitate and support existing businesses in Rochester? So think about things like the Main Street Grant Program that we have now successfully received a third round of funding for and getting that out to our community, the historic preservation grants that we've deployed to help property owners to position their properties for reuse, and then, so grow our own, and then attract new. How do we attract new investment into Rochester? In order to diversify our very anchor-dependent economy, we know that we need to attract new businesses to Rochester, really leaning into the medtech space as the place where it's sort of the low-hanging fruit, if you want to start or grow a business, where Rochester excels beyond most any other community is in the medtech space, so we spend a lot of time in telling the Rochester story to potential startups that are working in medical device, medical biopharma, et cetera, who want to be in a community that is supportive, want to be connected to Mayo Clinic, want to be in a state that has a strong ecosystem. So, and then just finally, there's lots of things we do that are about the culture we're trying to create, you know, a lot of the discussion today is about the culture that is trying to be created, and that is part of our commitment, things like community co-design, business forward, prototyping, these strategies that help strengthen the capacity of our community. And again, I'll just end with examples of how we are going out to attract new investment into Rochester, these examples, Bio Conference is an example of one of many places we are at in telling the Rochester story and making connections to Rochester, the Real Estate Summit this year on April 16, and Historic District Investment is an example of supporting downtown property owners. And I'll just end by reminding you that we don't deserve or take credit for all of this, we play a role, and we want to be partners with you and everybody else on this slide deck. So I tried to get to the questions that I understood to be on your minds, and hope that I achieved that, and just know that I have an open-door relationship with any of you, and happy to have further discussions.
Any further questions for Patrick while we have him here? Seeing none, thank you very much, thanks for coming in, thanks for being at the end of our program today.
Thank you for the opportunity.
And thanks for the connections. Any further business for today?
I'll just remind you that next week is the fifth Monday, the way that lands on your calendar is that you don't have a council meeting, so congratulations.
Thank you. Our first vacation for the year. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Vote.
We're adjourned. I think it's more important.
I think we can just do it.
Yeah. Very good. Thank you.
Actually, I mean, yeah, I was gonna say, I'll give you the motion.